Call the rides before you go begin the talks down and we'll get somebody to ride.
Called this uh regular meeting of city council to order here at city hall October 20th, 2020. Were there any additions to the agenda this evening?
Can I please add 651 East Fourth under the land bank?
I had one on the parking on South Exchange.
South Exchange?
Under New Business?
Yeah.
New Business, okay. You just want South Exchange?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other additions? Okay, entertaining motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, no citizens comments this evening? Okay, consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting, October 6th, 2020. Some move. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor raise your hand.
All abstain.
Of what? Three. Yes, one abstain. Appropriation ordinance 10/20/2020 in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Approved invoices for Core and Main and Berry Tractor.
Some may.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor raise your hand.
All abstain.
Two abstain?
Two to two. How's that work?
If it's two to two and we don't have one council member, I break the tie, so I'll favor that, so three to one, three to two, excuse me. Okay. Alright, moving on to department heads. Electrical Department, Jeff?
Oh, I guess it's been a good and bad deal. We uh, we've had some truck trouble. We've had trouble with that little bucket truck off and on since we got it back when they put the motor in it over a year ago with the, with the speedometer and several things coming on, the speedometer going off and the lights coming on in the dash. And it's affected the, those trucks are controlled by a, by a computer off of the bucket. For safety reasons, outriggers, stuff like that, so when things aren't right, why, the truck won't move. So, uh, we called the Altech guy and he told us, he said he thought maybe it should go to Ford first. Because he thought maybe that's where most of the issue was, so we took it to Marmees today. And uh, as soon as we hear back from them, we'll kind of know. It doesn't do it all the time, it just does it when you're really kind of in a hurry. And you need to leave, you know, and you can't. So, anyway, we took it up this afternoon. Uh, we've had some problems with the digger truck with a valve leaking, the, under the seat that controls uh, the boom. When you set on the seat, all, all the, all the controls are done through a hydraulic valve that comes up through the pestle. And uh, so we've got, we had to, we had to apply for an account. So that it didn't end up on a credit card, in case it was too much, and so, we've gone through that ritual and now we're waiting to, to get approval from TeraX so that they'll come out and get the parts and, and, the uh, uh, the mechanic said he thought it'd be between two and three thousand dollars to tear it apart and put it back together and rebuild it, so, we're still waiting on word on that. Um, we've got all the off ditch side poles set out west of town, or out of polls. So I borrowed two from Ellenwood. These are poles that we've had for quite a long time. And uh, so I borrowed two from Ellenwood and I hope to have a price on getting a load of poles next meeting, so. Other than that, you know, it's just daily stuff. I mean, nothing, none of the ordinary, so. Some of this stuff has to be cut in hot and we're kind of hoping to get these poles set before the weather turns. So if I can get them home tomorrow and we can get them set, why, maybe we can get stuff kind of headed our way before the weather changes first of the week, so.
Okay.
Anyway.
Alright, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff?
Oh, we got our new volt meter too. It's here. So it's gonna take some programming to get it figured out. Jason started with it the other day and we just haven't had time to sit down and mess with it, but, we're gonna get it figured out. We get a cold day when things are kind of slow, why, we'll get it put together, so.
Excellent.
Anyway.
Can you please go back to the um, the pre-ordinances, the Core and Main and Berry Tractor need um, listed out with the vendor and the price, anything, as it's a motion?
Alright, let's find get this, alright. Alright, going back to the invoices for Berry Contractor. Uh, need approval for this invoice, number 01063358. Uh, in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and two cents. Can I get a motion on that? Some move. Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor raise your hand? Motion carries. Second invoice from Core and Main, invoice number N098140 in the amount of two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Can I get a motion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor raise your hand? Motion carries. That it? Okay, thank you. Alright, moving on. Water Department, Jason?
I don't have nothing on the water, it's here.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason? Alright, uh, okay.
I'll add, I don't remember, I put it, did you put in your report, Jason, that the little sewer thing is getting looked at?
The what?
Mm-hmm. The little vac truck or whatever, the trailer vac truck?
Oh, no, that, I should've said that, I guess, because I'm the one that sent it up there.
Well, yeah, but it's still.
It's under him. We sent the little sewer machine to P and S, they're gonna evaluate it. To see if it's repairable and what it costs.
You're talking about the pole hide one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. That it? Okay. Alright, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns for Jason? Alright, okay, Street and Parks, anything on that, Jason?
Well, we're just finishing up a few little things, but got much now.
Alright, very good. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding uh, Street and Parks? Okay, we hear anything from Grant Administrator Lisa? No, okay. Anybody have anything to uh, question Lisa about? Okay. Okay, moving on, Police Chief, Chief Adams?
Uh, I got a couple things. Um, uh, first of all, we uh, had an issue again out at the gun range. Uh, went out there the other day and there's a ton of brass, probably a couple hundred rounds of uh, 223 brass laying out there. Some forty-five, forty-nine mil, everything's out there. Uh, so I changed the lock, closed it down for right now. I'm on duty this weekend, so I'm gonna go out and clean it up again. Uh, we'll probably open it up again, but this will be the third time that I've had to go out there and thoroughly clean it up. Um, so I guess if it happens again, we'll send a letter back out to those that have paid for their, their range out there, we'll send another letter back out and, if it happens again, we'll just evaluate. We did finally get done, whoever was shooting glass bottles out there, that's, that's finally over with, we haven't had that problem. Uh, but it's not getting cleaned up and uh, so I'm not gonna have the officers do it, so I'll go out and do it one more time. Um, and then if it continues to happen, we'll just reevaluate, but it gets pretty trashed out there. Um, our problem is, one reason I wanted to look at getting a camera out there, both for safety reasons, liability reasons, but then kind of so we can, go back and see, you know, we unlock the range, um, then they go out and shoot and then they lock it up when they leave, so. And then there's other people that have keys, and I'm not saying that they did it, um, the city crew, uh, there's a couple of other people in the city that have, the thirty-two ten key to get in there and they uh, they use it also. Um, so where this came from, we don't know. I've tried to trace it back, but we just don't know where, who, who it was.
I'd hate to, I'd hate to shut it down, like, because I'd rather have people shooting out there than out in the middle of nowhere. So my suggestion would be if you wanted to look into like a solar powered camera deal, if there's no electricity out there, maybe where it just films when it gets motion?
Yeah, that's what, that's why we were trying to look and I, I was trying to get with Jeff and see if we could run power out there. For one, I wanted lights out there at night, because we need to do night shoots out there. Um, and then we could hook up a camera to it, but we were unable to get our electricity out there, so we'd have to start paying for electricity through West Star. Um, so that just.
Midwest Energy.
Or Midwest Energy, so it just wasn't gonna be feasible that we couldn't, we couldn't run power out there. I mean, I hate to close it too, but um, I don't wanna have to go out there and clean it up all the time also.
I agree.
And I know that a lot of the citizens and that have paid their membership have called and they have said, you know, hey, we'll go out and clean up. It's not their responsibility either to go out there and clean it up, um, you know, any more than it is mine, but, we'll see, hopefully maybe, uh, we'll start trying to really, yeah, I thought we had a good system in place to see who was gonna be out there shooting. Um, that, then if a problem arose, that we could go back, but we're, we must have some loopholes, so I'm gonna try and figure that out and we'll get that squared up there, so. Um, second thing was, was uh, apparently maybe we have a key floating around for the Dodge pickup, the police pickup. Uh, Tori was out on patrol last weekend, happened to drive past the other officer's house that it's parked at and somebody was in it. Um, it was unlocked, when she went around the block and came back, cause the rear dome light was on and the brake lights were on. And then when she went back up to check it, um, the doors were unlocked in it. I got a quote out of Hutch for a thousand dollars to rekey it, but Marmees said that they can do it for, at the worst case scenario, it'd be six hundred and seventy-five dollars to rekey uh, the truck. Um, I'm thinking we're probably gonna be around six twenty-five, six fifty mark. So I'll call them tomorrow and we'll get that, get that sorted, I mean, we don't need that truck or equipment messed up in it. Where are those keys? And that's why we started the whole inventory upstairs so that we know what we have and, and we can keep accountability of it, but that was, pre-mined and who knows who has a key to it. Spent last week, had a good class last week out in Dodge City for a week from a Midwest counter drug. Um, did forty hour surveillance class out there for the week. Uh, working with DEA, uh, task force guys out there on surveillance and how to conduct better surveillance and what to look for, so that was a pretty good class. And the last thing I have is, uh, we talked about it before, Jamie, thank goodness printed this off for me tonight. Um, the vacation hours, I know I'm gonna try and get Tori, so it's just gonna be down to me. Um, for a little bit, because I want her to try and get some vacation time burned. But she's gonna have eleven and a, eleven and a quarter days by twelve thirty-one if she doesn't burn any. And uh, I'll have twelve days by twelve thirty-one if I don't burn any. Right now, it is hard for me with two major cases uh, that we have upstairs. Me being able to take any time off here at the end when we finally can get back full staffed is gonna be very tough. I'm more worried about the other officers and their time than I am mine, um, so I'd, I'd like to see if we can at least uh, carry, uh, Officer Perez is over. Um, I'm not worried about mine so much, I mean, it is what it is, but I just, I need to take care of them first, so.
What are they allowed to carry, Jamie?
Forty.
Forty?
Five days.
Five days?
And she'll have, as of ten five twenty twenty, she has a hundred and fourteen hours of vacation. Um, and she's gonna earn another sixteen hours by the end of the year. So that's gonna put her at a hundred and thirty hours of carrying over five, will give her eleven and a quarter days that she has to use by that time. And we've been shorthanded now, um, it's kind of rough to get one back and then say, okay, well, now you're gonna have to work a lot or, and it isn't fair to Tori, if I was to say, well, I'm gonna burn my vacation, you're gonna have to continue for a while working shorthanded or, or me vice versa, but, like I said, I'd just really like to rather make sure that, that they're taken care of, um, if I can beat them great.
They pay that for them, right, Jamie, if they don't use them at the end of the year?
No, they lose it.
Lose it?
I think the first year we did, we agreed to pay it out. We did something the first year, last year.
It's just a vacation, right?
We did pay you out.
Have you discussed with her about just paying her?
Uh, that's out of my, that's not in my department. I, I mean, if we wanna pay it out, that's fine, if we wanna do whatever, I don't care, that's not in mine, so I, no, I did not discuss that with her, because I don't have that authority.
I don't think it's in the handbook that we can pay them, I think that we can carry, like, you guys can approve to carry it over.
I guess, I guess we just need it.
Cause that could become a huge liability.
Just for, you know, we just need to make it the same all the way across the board, you know, we can't go on back and forth, I guess.
Cause, I mean, you could save up your vacation and come at the end of the year and be like, oh, Christmas bonus, or.
Right.
I'd just soon let them carry it over rather than pay them out. I mean, and we left it that way to our discretion as to whether let them, like, carry it over.
I mean, we shouldn't have a problem with it again, starting, especially January one for the new year, because we'll be full staff.
Right.
Um, we've just been really shorthanded since July. And then Dustin didn't start until March, so it was just me and Tori, so we only had from March to July, where we had actually three of us and then Dustin was in training anyway, so it wasn't like he could take a shift, so. We have been really hurting this year.
I'm good, just letting them carry it over.
If, if we do it for the police, I mean, we're gonna do it for everybody.
I, I'm the department I worked for.
I'm the only other one that has lots of time that I need to burn. I've got about three weeks I need to burn.
I guess I think if we do it, it should be for.
Seventeen days.
Everyone should have the option.
Yeah.
Right.
If you're gonna do it for one, you need to do it for all.
But, I, I just. The thing about it is, is I'm, I just, we've got two officers.
No, I, I know. And next year, I mean, Dustin won't be it.
Right, it'd be a different, different situation if it was the end of next year and they're saying, well, we all need to carry twelve hours over.
And every situation could be different, like.
Right.
We could be wanting to take a two week, or you know, Pam went and was a month off and maybe she would plan a couple years ahead and ask to, to try to carry you over like a two week vacation or, or what, how you, I.
I mean, I don't know what the rest of the, the city employees have for vacation time, but I guess if they need to, they have more people, they can probably work things around a little better of taking time off, is what I'm saying.
Sure.
What, what does it reset to, like, first of the year, then you get?
Well, the most they can carry, it'd be, they either carry nothing or up to. Thirty hours.
So carry over January one, if nothing is carried over, you would start it at the forty? Cause that's the carry.
I mean, we'll have to work definitely, I mean, that's a lot of time, but we have been short for a year. And I understand then next year, what he, we each have to burn forty hours plus, well, whatever we were carrying over or lose it, I mean, but, you know, we have twelve months to get that done.
Right.
So that's not gonna be.
And you have three full-time people at that point in time?
Yeah, yeah.
So it'd be a little easier for you guys to.
Oh, that makes perfect sense, but also what Kyle said makes perfect sense too. We just ran into that issue constantly, you know? They both make sense.
Twenty-seven, you just do it by department.
I understand the circumstance, I mean, I, it'd be fine, but I just don't want it to become a, but, I'm fine with it.
I kind of assume, I, I would just like to pay it out and start it, if it's in the budget, you know, and I don't want to lose it, you know, but.
I mean, it has to be in the budget.
Across the board.
That's what I think is paying it out.
I mean, it's.
I don't know.
I mean, the only thing you'll have to worry about is the liability of people not taking their vacation time and just getting the payout. Which, that's kind of why we talked, well, that's why we talked about doing the forty, because we were always hearing they're overworked and tired and, so vacation time is to take those days off that you need off. I don't know.
Yeah, I'd rather carry it than pay it.
They're gonna get paid for it one way or the other, right? I mean, they're gonna take some time off or they're gonna, but, makes no difference to me, I guess, I mean, I mean, just, you let them carry it over, but where do you stop letting them carry it, like, like, the amount of hours, just, not just in the police department, I mean, just like, anybody like, the amount of hours that you can carry over, like, does it get, you know, ten hours, thirty hours?
Like, every year starts back over, so.
Right, so you're not gonna build up too much, but.
Like, and you can do it, you can carry it over this year, but then you guys will know at the end of next year, they had that time to, to use it and they didn't, so, they're losing it.
Right.
And Pam, I think, starts the warnings about June, so, people have a pretty good idea of what they need to be using.
I just hate for it to be year after year, you know, which, I'm saying it when, I just, you know, I mean, you run into that problem and, if you keep stacking it up, you carry this year over, then you carry the next year over, then the next year over, and then the next thing you know, you got, twenty days, I don't know, I mean, if you start back over, you just start from square.
Yeah, I mean, either way, it's.
Ours is just a little bit tough, because it's, ours is twenty-four hours and there's only, only three of us for twenty-four hours, seven days a week, you know, being on call or, we're out on duty, you know, it's just, it's a little bit tougher, you know, to get, especially when you're shorthanded, but, you know, full-time, you know, we, it isn't any different than us working shorthanded with two, because one person's on vacation taking that time. You know, and that's a short time, it's not fourteen weeks of that, so that's kind of a nice thing, but, I mean, either way, it doesn't matter, I mean, like, like Marshall said, we have it in the budget to pay, if you want us to pay, then we'll pay, if you want us to carry it over, we'll carry it over. I know I lost all of mine last year, that I had over my forty hours, because I wasn't able to take any, because we were just short, um, and then coming into this year again, but, like I said, it's just mainly for the guys, my guys, I just need to take care of them one way or another.
It's just what I'd hate to see, worst case scenario is like if Dustin doesn't work out, you know, then we're gonna have another rough year and then we'll be in the same situation next fall. That's what I'd hate to see, yeah, understanding worst case scenario.
Trust me, we don't wanna be working this much, we would like some time off, that's, that's, we're in the same boat, um, yeah, we, we think the same way, it's just, you know, it is what it is, whether we're shorthanded, we still have to have twenty-four hour coverage, um, to try and do things and, you know, I, I don't wanna see it in either. I mean, I agree, something could happen and here we are again and, and I'm back asking, but, you know, I just, can't see that, I don't know.
Either way will work, I mean, it's in the budget if we wanna get it paid out like we did Jeff's, or we can carry it over.
Anything else, Chief?
Uh, I think that's it, I'll go.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief? Okay, what are we gonna do about it?
I'd say we wait till we have a full council, we'll make that decision.
Tabled until next week, or next meeting?
Cause right now it's split down the middle. I'd like to hear Ross's opinion. So, yeah, I'd say next meeting if you guys are okay with that.
Let me just ask you guys, are you willing to either pay them out or let them carry them? One of the two?
Yeah, yeah.
That way they're not, because next meeting's November, that gives them two months, if you say no, you have to burn them this year.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not gonna take them away from them, I just.
So at least they got some peace of mind that they're not gonna lose it one way or the other.
Yeah, so we get them the option.
Okay.
Right, is that what you're, you're saying?
Well, I just don't want them sitting here waiting another half a month to figure out whether we're gonna say, well, you're either gonna use it or lose it.
Right, no.
I mean, you guys are at least willing to either pay it out or let them carry it.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
What we decide to do, we'll decide at next meeting.
Yeah, that's fair.
Does that sound okay, John?
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion is to do a combination, um, just simply because historically, the police department's been understaffed and so, as some of you are concerned, it may just snowball vacation time.
Okay. So you could do something, carry over ten days instead of five and pay the rest out, or something like that?
You, you, you could change that, I guess, you know, I mean, instead of carrying just five days over, just make a limit.
Ten, ten, and then everything over that is paid out, right?
Yeah, you could do that, yeah.
Or you have to use it.
Or we could say, we, we'll let you carry half of your days and pay you for the other half.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to hear Ross's opinion, for council.
Right.
That's fine.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, we'll table it for next meeting.
Leave it on there?
Okay, moving on. Uh, we have anything from Fire Chief, Chief Sanders?
No.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, or Jamie can relate to Chief Sanders? Okay, moving on, City Administrator, Jamie?
Um, I don't really have too much, um, open, or, open enrollment's gonna be happening pretty quickly. Um, I have the advance insurance, that's the life insurance. Um, if I can just have permission for Mark to be able to sign any documents if needed to continue that part of, that's been the first and only that's come in, so, all that's keep them coming is, I get them.
Good with that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Anything else, Jamie?
Do you wanna talk about that truck parking real quick or?
Uh, it's down below.
That's it? Okay. Anybody have anything else for Jamie? Alrighty, alright, John, you have anything?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John? Okay. There you go. Alright. Anything off of old business that we'd like to discuss this evening? Your truck parking?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. We have a diagram right here.
Beautifully drawn.
Beautifully drawn? Did your daughter do that?
No.
So it's. Basically, there's a footing and then that, and that footing is where the pedestals are gonna be, or how am I, what's, well, that's a dolly down?
That's to dolly down, this will be the pedestals and this is just the underground wiring. And these are each of the truck stalls. Like I said, I just utilized as much space out there as possible. I really think if we do this, my suggestion is, is that these ditches on both sides of Eighth Street, get pulled really good so that we have a place for water to sit, if, drain and sit. And you bring all that material up and I think you probably, at some point in time, you eventually think about at least rocking from here to the blacktop. Cause otherwise, you're gonna have a grader out there three times a week. And I don't know, I mean, I, I didn't really talk to Ross on, I drove a truck enough, if you can't get in a forty foot entrance and a forty foot exit, then you kinda got a problem with it. This allows for everybody to come in one way, go out the same way, there's no backing up, there's no, it's straight pull-through. They can pull up to a pedestal, plug it in, get in the next morning, unplug it and drive straight out.
One thing, maybe a couple different poles for lights, Jeff, you think that's possible, just maybe two across there, trying to each way?
Yeah, whether you wanna put them in the middle or you wanna put them on the outside or, you know, I mean, that's kind of your call.
You think two's enough lighting here, you're saying?
Well, just like halfway, you'd have one point north, one point south, if you wanted to point one east or west, you could, but, and then halfway again, over here.
I'd like to see lights on the west side to light up the back of the trailers, especially like if they're pulling in at night, they can see the trailer, but also, if somebody's driving by and somebody's jacking around behind the trucks, it's lighting up the rear end.
Mainly for security.
For that big of an area, it'll take quite a bit of light.
Right.
Well, yeah.
What do you think's adequate lighting then, for?
I'm not saying.
Well, I don't know.
I'm saying just, you know, so they can read a magazine out there just to have to see.
The thing is that by the time that you The thing is, that by the time that you shine that much of a distance, you're gonna have quite a bit of height in order to not create so many shadows between the trailers, I mean, it'll be a little tough to light up, I mean, to do it to where it's, you know, adequate.
Right. Yeah. Well, yeah, I guess we cross that bridge to get there, is, but two or three, I don't know. You think a deep sunlight out there, just, just to get around, I mean-
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that looks pretty good, Marshall.
Like I said, it's just my idea, I, I went out, me and Jason went out, walked it off, measured it, I mean, I think you drove a couple posts in out there, I mean, if you guys wanna go see where, you know, what four hundred by four hundred looks like. It don't take up a lot, but it, I mean, it's, I think it'd be plenty big enough. I, I don't think we'll ever fill that thing, I think it's overkill. I think we probably have that many trucks in town, but I think when we enforce it, some of them trucks are just gonna leave town on their own, I mean, they'll go park them at their farms, or somewhere else.
Yeah. Room for twenty-six truck stalls is up there.
And that, and that would be from the south side, you know, I mean, north to south lined up there.
Right, right.
And then just a, and I kinda put the, like, their vehicle parking clear up there in the southeast corner.
By the fence.
By the fence, because I thought, you know, that's, that's far enough out of the way that, I mean, someone's either gonna have to drive in there-
You probably will need some light here.
You could light that up really good, you know? But, I mean, it'd be better than having them parked out here on Eighth Street, where, you know, if they're sitting there for a wink, somebody could get into them real easy, or whatever. And I guess it, it would even be probably possible, I don't know, if we have cameras out at the water facility, do we have cameras out there? But, I mean, it'd be an investment, we could even put some cameras out there, just to kinda oversee the truck parking.
Yeah.
I guess the next step's just starting to get numbers based off this plan, isn't it?
Yeah. I mean, I think Jeff's kinda got some numbers on the electricity, and I think we were talking twenty-five or thirty thousand in rock.
You got, somebody talked to Chad, or where did you guys get those numbers?
Um, Jamie called and got-
You did?
Yeah, and the work with Chad, I think, and... I mean, we'd have to get a quote on concrete, I don't think it'd be all that big of a deal, I mean, that's-
And all I have to do is call back to them and tell them the square footage of kind of what they're thinking.
Four.
Are you talking about on their city block, or? You know? Yeah, six or eight.
Well, let's get some numbers. See what we can do with everything per this diagram right here, then we'll discuss it at next meeting. Sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Alright, uh, anything else off of old business we wanna discuss? Water, town, that's, that's done deal.
Just waiting on... I sent everything to-
Unless there's anything else under old business, uh, move on to the land bank.
Do we need to have a land bank meeting, then?
John, do you wanna wait to have the land bank meeting till next meeting? Do you wanna discuss-
Ask again?
Do you wanna discuss the land bank, and, and then have the actual land bank meeting next meeting, or are you good with it now?
We, we can discuss it, I have not proposed anything to the landowner, so we need to propose, I've got a little agreement that I drafted for another entity that we would use, basically waiving liability, and then I think he's got some personal property he needs to remove from that land, that area too.
So, I, he just needs to look at it, and if he's in agreement, then the land bank can accept the property, but we can, we can go into land bank and discuss it.
Go ahead and do that. Okay, at this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting of City Council and move into land bank.
That's you. Call land bank meeting in order to discuss the property at six fifty-one East Ford. Is it East Ford?
East.
East Fifth.
Yeah. Did I put Ford?
Yeah, you said Ford.
Six fifty-one East Fifth.
I have Fifth wrote down. So, this was the house that, it's in someone's name, and then, I don't know, some relation, where like, she's, we can't find her, she's gonna sell us this house, but they can never find her, and I have discussed the land bank with her and them several times, and just continued to bring it up, and they ended up calling back and saying that they'd like to donate it, that they do have personal belongings that they'd like to get out, so...
Which property is that?
The house next to, uh, the yellow house, yeah, next to-
Third east of, to the east of Bitler's house.
The yellow house?
Yes.
Did they, did they mention how much time they would want?
And John, you just need to-
Well, it, the property was in a share sale, and I'm sorry, I'm kinda looking at this, uh, I've got two screens going here, in two thousand fifteen, though, it should be pretty easy as far as, um, I, I don't need to do any title work, was the, was the trucker, or the suburban, or whatever that is, was that ever removed?
I don't know, I think that, that might be Bitlers.
And it's been moved. The truck that was backed up to the porch, yeah, that was the neighbors. That was the neighbors.
Oh, okay, okay, so, I just, I can do an agreement, it's basically a liability agreement that says that, um, we're taking it as is, um, cause I, I'm assuming the intention is to tear it down, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would be short and sweet, and once he approved it, and then I'd bring it to council next meeting for you guys to accept, and then once, once you guys accept it, he would sign a deed, that's all we would do, or something like this.
I guess I'm good with that, I mean, if you-
That's fine with me.
Yep.
It's just a two-page document we put together, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago for another project, that I think is gonna work pretty well.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll just let you do that then, John, and we can... If they have it by next meeting, I guess if they sign off on it, then we can accept it by next meeting, or... And you, if they sign off, you'll go ahead and do the title workings, or paperwork?
We don't need, we wouldn't need to do it, cause we did it for the, uh, the tax, or the, I'm sorry, the-
But, I mean, you just draw a deed up for them, or whatever, quitclaim deed?
Right, right, you know?
To the land bank?
I mean, you guys would have to sign the agreement, but as soon as you sign the agreement, then you can sign the deed.
Okay. Were there back taxes owed on that one?
Oh, man, four dollars, forty-seven dollars.
Are they back, or current, or just owed?
That, those are, that's the nineteen, and, uh...
Almost seems like a late fee, or something.
Looks like it's forty-seven and fifty-seven.
Okay.
You wanna go to the county commission over a hundred bucks?
No, but I think if we, if they give it to us, we'll just pay it and be done. I don't really wanna, I don't need more arguments.
Yeah.
So...
Okay.
Sounds good. Anything else for land bank? Entertain a motion to adjourn land bank.
So moved.
Motion second, any discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Called this regular meeting of City Council back in order, um, new business, South Exchange.
Hold on a second, Jamie, you sent us out a deal that we needed to approve something.
Yeah, um...
Do we still need to do that?
No, I didn't wanna add it, I'm gonna check with John and make sure that I did everything correct before we move forward.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm, I told him I'm waiting on the Fourth Street, so you can double-check that report I did.
Okay, yeah, we need to talk about that, or we'll get it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you just sent it out, and I just got like-
I was just doing what we did in the past, and-
Okay.
We're double-checking that process.
Okay, good, okay, alright, alright, moving on to a new business, uh, South Exchange.
So, on G, did you guys, came to a consensus then, on South Exchange, to do no parking right by the park, correct? Like, and that was it, is that the way I'm understanding it?
On the east side and north side, I believe, right? On the east, or, be the west side of Cornwell Park, on the east side of the street-
Or up Exchange.
And on the north side, on the south side of the street, basically on the, the west and north border of Cornwell Park, to where it was event parking, and so if they have a soccer game, or football game, whatever they do.
And I'm, the understanding, I guess, is cause of the county trucks drive through there, so, what doesn't make sense is how you wouldn't go all the way to First Street and no parking on one side, because, I mean, you got down by Rusty's House, I drive that road every day, it gets tight there, only put, when there's vehicles on there, and that truck would drive that exact same route. Currently, the county uses Nutting, the big trucks, I've seen them use Nutting, Exchange, and Main, so my suggestion is to have them only use Main Street, go down to the dead end, take a right, cause I see them take either, either route all the time, so, do that, or, it's only right to go all the way down to First Street, because it's, it's the exact same width, all the way down to First, and once you cross First Street, it widens up, but it doesn't matter, then the county trucks either turn left or right. It just, it doesn't seem right to only do it there, and to only let people park there during events, it just doesn't make sense to me.
I think part of it, you say, is, um, you know, during these events, soccer, whatnot, if there's vehicles parked, they don't have vehicle, you know, spots for the people going to the event to park, so that's, that's part of it, is why it's just event parking, it eliminates someone from parking there, I guess, um, and tying up those spaces for people going to the event at form of park.
I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to me, absolutely no sense. It's the exact same width all the way down, and then you're allowing at certain times to do it, it just, it doesn't seem right, doesn't make sense.
I don't think it's intended to be certain times, it's intended to be this, like, for the city park that is available for the community, so they have room to be able to enjoy those entities. Like, it's not certain times, it's just so that that opens up where the community members can enjoy their park.
But, at that point, you do let people park there, at that time.
Right.
But, it gives them a place to park-
Yeah.
During that time, and, so there's, so there's more than, more than one problem, I guess, the passing through-
That's what I'm suggesting.
Being very tight, and then also, the people wanting to enjoy the park, wanna park there, and they don't have a place to park. There's two, two issues, I guess, is my understanding.
No, two guys, but it just, I wouldn't root for something like that, when something's wrong, it's wrong, it just, that's, you guys, I think, are in the wrong there. It's just not right, I wouldn't root for that. It's sort of picking on a certain individual.
I don't know if I'm picking on anybody.
Yeah, I guess I didn't see it.
I mean, it's the exact same width all the way down. And like I said, we're trying to take care of the roads, and the county's currently using three roads to go south, cause they all access the county shop one way or another, I would just like to see them just use Main Street. And it seems like they're the ones having a problem with fitting down the road.
Yeah. I mean, even, it's, it's not just the county traveling up and down those roads, if you go in there through there and pick up or anything else, it's really tight.
But, all the way from First Street, too.
I get it, I get it, but there's, it's residential up there, you know, I mean, you gotta leave them somewhere to park on the street, pretty much, I mean, you don't have to, but-
We talked about being fair across the board, though.
Right.
It's the same width.
I mean, that would mean we would have to go through every single street and do that way. We're talking about a park in a residential area that we're trying to create parking for the park, not for just the normal width of the street. Like Ryan said, there's two issues, the width of the street, so people can get by, but also creating it by the park, like First and Exchange doesn't have a park by it, people aren't worried about parking down there.
It's your guys' decision, so if it doesn't bother you, then I spoke my piece.
Okay, any more discussion? Alright, since we have no executive sessions on the agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.